Welcome everyone to the work session of Provo Municipal Council. It is 2:33 PM on Tuesday, December 10th, 2019. And we are gathered in the City Center Conference Room at 351 West Center Street of Provo, Utah. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web on the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room pick up the noise of paper and other rustling objects as well as side conversations. We'll start with a roll call.
This is Strachan.
Brian Jones.
Gary Winterton.
George Handley.
David Arden.
Kay Van Buren.
John Magnus.
Hannah Fawzal.
Dave Connect.
George Stewart.
Mayor Confucian.
Isaac Paxman.
Andy Elizabeth Vanderwijk.
Excellent. Thank you all. Although this is a public meeting, only presenters and those seated at the council table may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. We will begin with an opening prayer offered by Councilor Stuart Stewart.
Our dear Father, we return to heaven. Father, we love thee and so appreciate all the help that we receive as a council, as the mayor, as a city. We ask a blessing on this meeting that it might be productive, that we might do the things that would make Provo a better place for all of those citizens. We ask a blessing on our council meeting this night also, and the reception that we're to have, that things might go well. We appreciate, Father, the opportunity we've had to serve, and we pray that those that continue to serve in the city might do so in a way that will be pleasing to thee and to the citizens. We say these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Councilor Stewart. Following the work session and a brief closed meeting, there will be a reception for the retiring council members. It will be held in the lobby immediately outside the council chambers beginning at 4:30 PM and then ending shortly before the regular council meeting, which will start 30 minutes later than usual at 6:00 PM. Our first official, well, order of business would be to acknowledge the birthdays of two councilors, Kay Van Buren and Gary Winterton. Cliff, how would you like to start the song?
George, do you want to start your song one last time? We'll join in.
Oh, somebody had a birthday. Our dear little council members, dear, thank Father in heaven bless them throughout the coming year.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Kay Van Buren. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Item one on the agenda is a presentation regarding the Pleasant View Neighborhood Plan from a Clivarian student team from Brigham Young University. This will be led by that team, as well as Robert Mills, Provo City Mayor. I'm just going to get up and say I have had the great privilege of working with these students for the last semester. They've really helped us in kind of kicking off a neighborhood plan for the Pleasant View Neighborhood, and they have been wonderful to work with, and I'm just going to step out of the way and let them take over.
So we'll just start with a quick introduction. We'll have our, we have two of our team members here, Seth and Linda. You guys can kind of wait for them. And then I'm Kelsey, the project manager, and then our wonderful professor, Jamin, is in the back as well. Thank you. So you can go to the next, oh, great. Sweet, thank you. So we are looking at the Pleasant View Neighborhood today, and we have Paul Evans here as well. He's the neighborhood chair. So just to kind of get ourselves oriented, the Pleasant View Neighborhood is within the blue boundary lines. It's surrounded, it's in a unique position because it's surrounded by BYU on a few different sites. We have BYU down here, the La Vella, it's toward Stadium, and then the intramural fields up at the top of the neighborhood there. And then we also have the MTC just to the east of the neighborhood. So surrounding the neighborhood, it has some, you know, unique pressures with its proximity to these large stakeholders, and so there's a need for this plan so that the Pleasant View Neighborhood, their needs can be met and that their voice can be heard and that their vision can be outlined. So our process, just a quick overview, is we started with some data collection. We divided that into three groups, working with the neighborhood, neighborhood chair, the neighborhood chair, Paul Evans, as well as the chair people, and then sending a survey out to as many who are willing, who are willing to respond at the start for initial data collection to see what the concerns and themes were. We also tried to reach out to as many stakeholders as would respond, and then we've been working with the City Planning Commission as well. So our second step was we went into the writing stage, where we wrote up a draft and presented it in front of the City Planning Commission, received feedback from them and Paul Evans, and then redrafted that, and that's the current draft that we're looking at today. And then just moving forward, we'd want to continue to have additional neighborhood feedback as we move forward toward finalizing the plan. So today we'll just be focusing on a, on a few items in the plan. It is more extensive than what we'd be able to cover today. So starting off, some existing characteristics of the neighborhood. It has all of these different zonings within it, all the way from low to high density, and then some optional accessory units for some of the lots. Some examples of this, we see single-family homes, town unit duplexes, four complexes, apartment complexes. One of our, Seth actually wrote this quote in our plan, and I just feel like this summarizes and captures what we really want to do with the neighborhood plan. So the Pleasant View Neighborhood currently enjoys houses, condominiums, townhomes and apartments with diverse architectural styles. These different styles give color and character to the neighborhood and accommodate a wide range of resident needs and living situations. As the neighborhood evolves and inevitably develops, care should be taken to maintain its diversity and personality. The durability and feasibility, or sorry, flexibility of the Pleasant View Neighborhood is one of its strongest assets. So this is the gem that we've found in the Pleasant View Neighborhood that we would really like to preserve going forward. Here are some photos of those different types of houses, or zoning and residential types. So the general areas of concerns that we have identified as themes for the neighborhood are neighborhood safety and walkability, and then also neighborhood cohesion. And we felt that both of these concerns would be addressed in one issue, so I wanted to bring up that issue before you today, and then we could look at it and talk about these concerns within that issue, or even we can open up at the end if you want to talk about these concerns outside of this issue. So that is the mobility of 2200 North. So in the general Provo Mobility and Transportation Plan, or Transportation Plan, there is proposal to widen the 2200 road into a five-lane arterial road, and as we did some research, we brought up some concerns that we would have in widening that road. So the concerns are listed here, and we'll just go through those. The driveways would be opening up onto a main road, which is contrary to what the general, Provo general plan would like to see as its philosophy. The general plan also suggests that we shouldn't have like major arterial roads going through the neighborhood, because the Pleasant View Neighborhood does go above 2200 North. This is 2200 North right here, so it'd be dividing this part even more. We have that happening already over here with the Allred Community and Canyon Road being such a main road. So that would be a concern, keeping the neighborhood cohesion together. The housing values would change, possibly how the houses are being used. You might see more rental properties versus homeowners living in their houses. Huge concern is safety for the children who would be walking across 2200 North to get up to the public school that's located up here. Hopefully this is making me too dizzy. Dividing up the neighborhood spatially and creating kind of livability vacuums for pedestrians. And then we talked about this, like not having that cohesion. So, yeah, and then kind of just some other questions is like, will it even fix the walkability or the, the traffic flow? So these are just things that we've been talking about. And in addition to that, just looking at the layout of the neighborhood, so just trying to again, Pleasant View Neighborhood is here, and then this would be BYU down here. This is currently 2200 North coming around to 900 East, and just how there are other roads that parallel this road. This is Stadium Avenue right here, and how the, the current traffic on this street is really low, and so there may not be a huge need to widen this road if other routes are still having low traffic. And maybe there's even options of, you know, making this left turn light a little bit more like feasible or longer to use to reroute traffic so that the 2200 North isn't receiving such a congestion. So this time, I don't want to take up too much more talking about what we've done, but do you guys have any questions or comments about 2200 North, like myself or my teammates? We can answer these. Or if there's other neighborhood issues outside the context of 2000 North, that 2200 North that you'd like to bring up, we'd be happy to talk about as well. Yes?
Yeah, it may be for Paul, but the, because I was part of a conversation about trying to find some ways to identify safety issues or improve safety for kids getting to the schools. And I don't know what the, where that conversation went after the last time I participated in it, but it seemed to me, as you've kind of rightly pointed out, that until, telling unless we solve that problem, we're only inviting more trouble if we're talking about expanding the road before we've resolved that problem.
It's, it's an ongoing discussion on what the best solution might be. The city is, engineers have asked the Mountain Lines Association for funds to purchase a home at the, at an intersection on 2200 Guard with perhaps the idea of putting a stoplight or having a stoplight in there. That might be one solution. Neighbors have suggested, you know, changing the, the amount of traffic that goes on there by changing the light at 9th East and, and University Parkway. So if you're heading north right now and you want to turn left, you wait for a long time, and then you can go straight through, easy. So maybe by changing the light signaling, there might be some ways of managing traffic. Also, another idea is roundabouts that could be placed there that would give pedestrians a safe harbor perhaps halfway across. And, you know, so there's, there's a number of different ideas, and that's all fluid, and it'll come back to the council as part of the Transportation Master Plan. It is still going through TMAC or through the Transportation Mobility Advisory Committee review, and perhaps it'll be a public open house in January, and I get to you guys by March after it goes through the planning.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments?
Question, how much more growth do we expect? How much more traffic do we expect on that? We don't have a lot of ground east of 9th East to be developing. What kind of expansion and growth in cars are we expecting?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, yes, yeah, go for it.
So I just came from a very lively TMAC meeting where we've been talking about the draft Transportation Master Plan, which we'll see very soon. And 2200 North came up a lot in that discussion, specifically regarding the traffic counts. In the, in the current plan, that, in the draft that they've provided to us, the counts are about 17,000 cars a day, and, and they went back and actually verified that, and that number seems to be holding pretty steady. The interesting thing about that, though, is that that's the current count, and it's showing the, the level of service. And then they, our engineers and our consultants have provided information on 2024, and there's not a lot of change, and also on 2040, and there's still not a lot of change. The numbers seem to be holding pretty steady. So one, one real interesting thing that we discussed in that meeting just barely was 2200 North currently calls for a five-lane road, but the language in the Transportation Master Plan is probably going to change to looking at capacity and safety concerns. So actually being able to really dive into a lot of these issues that Kelsey's been talking down that have been raised to say, are there other alternatives? Are there additional things that we could look at that, in a design perspective, that might accomplish the goal of moving traffic and increasing mobility, but not have the, maybe the financial implications of, and the community implications of purchasing additional homes and things like that?
Yeah, so Gary adds a great question about traffic, and in that immediate area, well, maybe we're not going to see a lot of growth, but I'll tell you, on South State Street, those 600 new units going in, when you drive north, when you get up by the cemetery, it's like, where am I going to go? Am I going to go into town, staying on State Street, or am I going to fork off on the 9th East? A lot of people like 9th East. We only have like three ways to go north-south anyway, Fifth West and University, maybe Second West, but you got to go into town. So if you're already on the east side of town and you want to just zoom up nines, then where do you end up? You end up at that stoplight at BYU, or you keep going and you curve around, and all admit, I'm going north, that's how I go.
Thank you. So are we okay on time to take a few more questions? I know it's at 10:00.
Probably should wrap this one.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Kelsey, and the whole team. Excellent work. We appreciate our partnerships that we can have with your class, and it really helps us move forward. There's, there's a whole lot that, on our, let's see, it's the Department of Community, no, Department of Neighborhood and Community Neighborhood Services. Took me months. There's a lot that we're expecting from them, and it's really helpful when we can share, share the load and hope that it was good. Maybe, Councilor, can I just jump in and say, kind of the next steps of this? This class has been so great to kind of get us a good framework for this plan. They presented to the planning commission in study session. It's not gone to the, to the actual planning commission, so we have additional work to do, but we have a good framework to, to use that and to go forward with. So you should expect this and seeing this and then having a lot of discussion about this plan in the coming weeks.
This is what we incorporate into the neighborhood plan, and then we take this and then, because I don't think this is something that we necessarily adopt, but we adopt it as, do we, will adopt it as part, or will it just be incorporated into the plan?
So, so the Pleasant View Neighborhood Plan will be adopted as an appendix to the general plan. But by understanding this, this is the kind of the frame, this is the base, this, this will evolve into that plan.
Okay.
And you just got a brief little snapshot of it. Thank you for your work. Item two is a discussion regarding the proposed project area plan and budget for the medical school community reinvestment project area. This has been budgeted for 25 minutes and will be presented by David Walter, Redevelopment Agency Division Director.
Councilor Chairman, members of the council, everyone, members of the public, good afternoon. The item for you this evening is the public hearing for the adoption of the redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment plan, and the proposed budget for the medical school redevelopment project area. This item has been noticed in the newspaper, and it's been, the plan has been available at our counter, at the Development Services counter, as well as with the city clerk for the last 30 days, and this is the next step in creating the project area and beginning the, beginning to lay the groundwork to collect the tax increment. As you know, one of the items that made this plan slightly unique is that we are proposing to use some of the tax increment generated through this project for the enhancements at the golf course. The golf course is currently undergoing some renovation as a result of the sale of the three holes to the Norto Medical School people. They have an opportunity to make additional enhancements which will improve playability and, and extend playing times in the summer through the additional lights and some other pathways. And so the tax increment is being proposed to pay back the interphone, interfund loan that was made to make, to make this happen. You may remember that this particular plan, the only portion of it that's in the redevelopment project area is the housing that's going to be constructed as a ancillary use to the medical school. So just to cover the medical school in and of itself, those three holes, the 21 acres that were previously not on the tax roll, so all the taxing entities, including the school district, will get the full benefit of the increase in the assessed value as that project comes online. If you want to scroll to the very end of this, please, I think there's a map that we can kind of take a look at.
Is this basically the same?
Correct.
It's, it's the same area that we were focusing on target.
Once upon a time, I think in 2007, so what, what, now, okay, I'm sideways. So the medical school, excuse me.
Sorry, there's another map, but this one is more of yours.
That's, that's fine. So it's merely this area up here, and this is going to be the housing component. So all of this, which was down here, will be, the taxing entities will get the full increase of the assessed value once that project comes online.
So north is to the right?
Yes.
Yes.
And can we scroll up on that map just a little bit? I now can see the red, the area in red.
Yeah, the red, the red area, so. This is the eight acres that was the previously Nature Sunshine piece. The developers purchased it. This is where they're planning to put all of their housing. It'll be approximately 730 units, multi-story, maybe some, maybe some retail on the, on the ground level, but it will be incorporated, you know, through street design with the rest of the medical school once that project is developed. Tonight's item is to hold a public hearing, to take any comments that we may get from the public. I am not aware of any that have been made to either the city recorder's office or to our front counter. And then we will start the process of negotiating the interlocal agreements. The balance of the tax increment for the, the 12-year period that this is projected to go out to will help to pay for some of the sewer improvements that are going to be necessary for this site and for the medical school.
Has the school board met on this already?
Yes.
And they've approved the area?
They've given, yeah, they've given the initial approval for this. We've had conversations with the school board about it. We've had conversations with the county commissioners as well about this project, Harry. Yes, sir.
So roughly, does the school board, percentage-wise, give, definitely give up a lot more or postpone a lot more than we do? Is it five to one, or is there some rough ratio?
So, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So I, the reason I ask that is there's, there's some people that would just wonder, you know, what, what we're giving up versus what the school district gives up, and they wonder why we do it. And to me, it's to help things happen that would not normally happen, and that in the end, make Provo a better place or increase our...
So the school district, in, in looking at this, there's a couple of, and, and I don't want to go so far as to speak for them, but I think they view these as mitigating circumstances. The first one would be that the 21 acres immediately to the south of the project currently are previously, they were not on the tax roll, and so no one was receiving any tax, tax income, or tax income from that, either the county, the school board, or the city council, or the city as a taxing entity. With the sale of the, those three holes to the Norto Medical School, that property came back on the tax roll and slightly changed the ratio. You may remember, we've spoken in the past, that the school board has a rule that only 5% of the assessed value can be within a redevelopment project area at any one time. But with this coming on board now, that changes it slightly. There are a couple more project areas that will terminate in the next two or three years, and so it's an opportunity for us to, you know, talk to the school district and work with them and the city council and the county to talk about areas in the community that we may want to examine as a possibility of further redevelopment as the community continues to grow and to progress. The other, the other thing is that the school district recognizes that some of the enhancements that are being proposed, paid through this tax increment area, will benefit the school district. Currently, Provo High and Tempe U High both have golf teams that practice here, and so some of these enhancements that are being proposed will enable them to, to have a better, better playing field and a better practice time. Additionally, you know, BYU, and I believe, I don't know for a fact, but I think UVU also has some classes that come out here and practice or, or learn how to play golf. So they recognize that, and in addition, you know, the, the junior high kids use this as part of their cross-country, so some cross-country meets are held here in the fall. So some of these enhancements will be available for them. So the school district kind of recognizes the fact that in improving the golf course, there is a direct benefit to the school district. They also see that there's going to be a benefit and opportunity with the medical school for internships that perhaps students that are currently in high school have a desire to know more about the medical profession and could work with the medical school and see if that's a direction. But it's an opportunity for us to make, you know, we are, again, we're not levying a new tax. We're not increasing necessarily a tax burden on the general public of Provo. We're not asking them to levy a tax on themselves, we're just capturing a portion of the increase. So for a time, the school district will give up 70% of the increase of the assessed value on the red piece alone, and on the 21 acres to the south of that, they will get the entire benefit of the development, which is slated to be about 125 million when they're done. Does that answer your question?
Now, there's no plan for any increment on the, on the medical school.
We are not plan, no, we are not planning to increase the tax, the tax increment area to cover the medical school. Mr. Van Buren?
So those words, we're not planning, there's not a plan, there wasn't a plan. What, what kind of protection do you have to the city have or the citizens have that that won't change in the year when they decide to start building the medical school?
I, one, they would have to come before you as a body reacting as the redevelopment agency and ask for that. You know, we, when the property was sold and we entered into the development agreement a number of years ago, we did commit to use our best efforts to create a project area. And at one time, we did look at having the project area be over the entire development with the thinking that it would be a shorter timeframe, larger, we'd have a larger base in a shorter timeframe. Subsequently, in examining it, we narrowed, we cut it back to include only the housing portion so that we, as a city, would... so that we as a city would get the full benefit of the school, since it's a for-profit university, they will be paying taxes, as well as the school district and the county. I don't, I mean, I, there's nothing in the agreement, or in the plan, or anything that says, "This will never, never change, never be amended, never be added to, never be extended." There is a mechanism within the Utah law to allow that to happen if redevelopment, or the city council acting as the redevelopment agency thinks it's in the best interest of the citizens of Provo. And all I can say is that, as long as Dixon and/or I are here, that we would strongly discourage them from coming forward and asking them for that.
And I would say as long as I'm here too, but I've got about eight hours.
But we've kind of had that conversation already, they've asked about that possibility, and we've said, "No, it's not, go with it."
They've had conversations saying things before that aren't happening, so I have no faith in what they said will happen. I'd like to have protection for the city, because that's what I'm concerned about, right? Um, second question, the housing element, what, what size did you say that is?
730 units.
Is it student housing?
It's, it's going to be, short answer is yes and no. The long answer is...
Is there any requirement that people live in that building or students?
There, I don't believe that they'll be, you know, they will not be restricted to it, because the housing will be onboard and online prior to the opening of the medical school.
So basically, what we're being asked to do is help improve the sewer and water for 736 of unit pharmacy building?
Partially, yes. Also to help improve the sewer lines for the medical school. And we're not, I mean, when we say, we're, I mean, the tax increment's going to be reimbursing a portion of their cost, not the, not the full cost of the sewer.
We do have an item on tonight's agenda, though I think it talks about impact fees. Do they will be adjusted for that same purpose, is that correct?
I believe so, based on some of their offsite improvements.
Okay. Um, do we have any idea of this increment that we're talking about? How will it break down between surveying the area there and the improvements on the golf course?
I don't have that breakdown, but if you could, if Hannah could please scroll up a little bit? And it's going to be kind of the other way. No, back the other way, please. I said up, didn't I? I meant, I meant down, my apologies. Okay, so once again, it's one of David's spreadsheets that are, there we go. Very colorful, but very hard to read, especially here, like me said on the back row. But, so what we're proposing is that we will get like 2.6, and so we're taking, we're taking a pretty significant chunk of the tax increment for the first five years in order to make those enhancements to the golf course. And then after that, it goes to the, it goes to the developer in order to reimburse them for a portion of the, of the infrastructure cost.
So 2.5 out of 7.9 roughly will go to the golf course improvement?
And we're taking ours mostly upfront. 2.6.
And in front of us, it says that our Provo City puts into this 7.9, or 1.77 initially. So looks like we're kind of getting more back for the improvements than we put in?
Yeah, I, we're, so the, my understanding is that the total golf course enhancements are roughly 2.3, and that we gave a little bit extra just in order to make sure that we covered that amount, so. And I think we're also paying a nominal interest rate. I think it's the local agency interfund rate that we're paying, so. Yes, sir.
And how do those, how does that amount, the 2.3 for enhancements to golf course, how does that interface with the cost of relocating the three holes?
Not at all. The cost of relocating the three holes is strictly on the medical school.
How's that coming?
As far as I know, it's underway, and they're doing well.
It's amazing what they've done out there, they've got the sod in.
So I'd guess it's 75, 80, 85% complete?
It's getting close.
Have we received anything from Mossage Medical for reimbursement for the funds we put in?
Yes.
Is that being up to date, or?
They are paying the bill I can ask out right now. So none of the money that's slated here on the tax increment is going to, for that. The cost, their cost to relocate the holes was their acquisition cost for the three holes.
Oh, do you ever identify a dollar amount, what did that represent?
I did not know. But none of the money that's slated to come out of this tax increment stream is to go for that. Yes, sir?
I'm just trying to, trying to wrap my head around this, I read through it, but I missed some points of this already. So the 5.3, which will be going to the developer, that's to pay for sewer improvements? Or what is, were there other aspects, or is it just?
So they, there's a, they have to redo a lift station. So at this, at this particular location, I believe they're at the end, at the end of the line, so they have to kind of move, move the sewers, I understand it, move the sewer kind of back up to get it to the treatment center. Is that correct, Dave?
So the sewer improvements on the medical school and the residential area that's next to the medical school, they've been told that they have to modify the sewer on East Bay Boulevard, runs north from the golf course back toward the treatment plant, so that line has to be upgraded, and the lift station that takes it into the treatment plant has to be upgraded.
And they kind of have to rebuild the whole lift station, as I understood it, is that right?
Okay, and that's roughly the 5.3 million, or is that 2 million?
I apologize, I just barely walked in.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what the differential is.
Okay, so if I could just take a moment, how I'm looking at this, when we, for example, just in the, in our notes here, it talks about that this money, we just propose that the money be used to fund a portion of project costs in the project areas, that's just mandatory housing allocations required by the state. So the state says, "If you're going to have new development, that development needs to help pay for housing," did it?
So there, because it's a new redevelopment project area, and because of changes in the redevelopment law, this project will throw off 10%, any, 10% of the tax increment goes into a housing fund.
So 10% of the...
So if you, if you, if you go back to the spreadsheet again real quick, there is a line item that shows 10% of the housing, 10%, a 10% housing slot.
So 10% of the 7.9?
So has the way, I believe it's this bottom line right here, this sums up all the 10, there's a 10% line item into every school district, the city, the county. And then at the bottom, there's a 10% line item that comes across here, and it's total, total housing set aside. So this, this project does generate housing set aside funds, which can be used. We can make benefit finding resolutions to use some of that outside the project area if needed.
Okay. So thank you for that description, I hope that helps me understand a little better. Let me take a step back, and we forget to talk about that, but thank you, I feel like I didn't understand it before. But, but we have this project, and this project has an impact on our systems, on our infrastructure. So we have, we require them to pay impact fees, we require them to do the project, you know, the aspects that are correctly related to theirs. You know, and that, that's kind of been our policy, our philosophy is, if development's coming in, they need to pay for, for these things. But then we create a tip, we create this, this project area, which then takes the money that we would have been collecting in future property taxes and pays it back to them. So in, in that respect, we're, we're taking kind of general money, from the general front, from the citizens of Provo, and then applying it to their project. You know, the way I understand tax increment, if, if this project wouldn't have happened without that, that tax increment, we're saying, "Well, we wouldn't have had that future taxes in the first place," so it's not really taking out of the pocket of, of the taxpayers to pay for this, because it wouldn't have been there. But to the amount, to the extent that development would have occurred and taxes would have been paid, it is, it is coming out, so that's, that's kind of where that balance is. So when I, when I'm weighing this item, I'm, at this point, at least things are happening, so I have to take a step back and say, "Okay, what did we agree to at the beginning? When, when this was still being negotiated, what did we..."
So when property was sold?
Right.
In the, in the real estate purchase agreement, there is language that says, "We will use our best efforts to create a redevelopment project area." And so in the course of the negotiations, we have scaled it back, it was going to be the entire, not only the, the housing portion, but the entire medical school portion. And the thinking was, is that if we could do that, then we would take the money for a shorter period of time and still be able to make those payments. But we have subsequently scaled that back and reduced it, so that the survey area and the project area are now going to be just the eight acres that the housing will sit on. So there is a, there is currently a base year value, so that base year value, so everybody still gets their taxes based on that base year value, and then they will give up a portion of their increased taxes for a period of time as the project. Typically, it's for 12 years, sometimes it's 15.
And in this case, what's being proposed, oh, we didn't, we're not there yet in the process?
No, I think we estimated it at 12.
So, so, and I want to live up to that commitment, because that was, that's what we committed to do, to use our best efforts, and I think we need to do that. I do think we need to, as we're evaluating this, just look at, you know, have things changed. And so it doesn't need to be now, probably, we don't, probably don't have time for it now. But one thing I'm interested in is, is how has their proposal changed for that housing component? It, I feel, if I remember back when we were negotiating this, this was kind of envisioned as how student housing...
Student housing.
And so that, that's changed, and so if that has changed, I think, then that's worth going back and looking at and saying, are, is this still, you know, with that having changed, do we adjust what, what we're planning to do as well? Is what they're proposing, is that still just as aligned with our goals and what we were hoping to do? Or is it more aligned with what we're hoping to do, or is it less aligned with what we're hoping to do? And that may affect what I believe we should, you know, in fulfilling our commitment?
I believe that one of the reasons we scaled back, I mean, not just in deference to our partners, the school district and the county, but because they were increasing the number of units, we could scale it back and still be able to do the golf course enhancements through this, and as well as assisting with the sewer project. That was one of the reasons that we did scale it back to just the housing portion, because they did increase the number of units that were put on it. Thank you.
So while things have changed, it's not like they're doing less than they originally agreed. They're providing more housing for a different segment in addition to what they were going to do originally.
But we don't do that necessarily for other developers, that becomes the issue, isn't it? In my mind, but, you know, if some, we do it in some areas, well, I guess we do, don't we?
Yeah, we, it just depends on what we want.
I neglected to mention that, you know, we're not, this is money that, we're not proposing to repay out of any other source at this time. I mean, this is, if, if they don't put this into the ground, so to speak, then they don't get it out of the, on the back end. So we're not, I mean, they're not going to have access to any other funding source through the city, or through the city's funds, to be able to cover some of these costs. Subsequently, I mean, this is how we're proposing to repay back the loan that was taken out in order to make the, you know, to make the golf course enhancements, so.
We only have another minute or two, if there's an additional question, or we can, yeah. At this point, we're only talking about creating the survey area, the project area. We will see, well, a future council will see some of this in the...
So tonight is the, the public hearing for the adoption of the plan and the budget. So this is not, the next item is the survey area resolution, so this is slightly...
Survey area?
Yes, we've already done the survey area.
The project area, is that part of tonight?
Project, the adoption of the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment budget is tonight.
Yes, sir. But we're not, this is not the final decision on whether we're going to fund this?
We'll have other opportunities. And we will have our redevelopment council here tonight as well, so. If you have additional questions.
Thank you very much. Item three is a resolution denoting a survey area authorizing the preparation of a draft community reinvestment project area plan and budget related to the mixed project, and authorizing the directing of all necessary actions. So this is a step before we were with the last item. Also presented by Mr. Walter, and we have budgeted 15 minutes of this.
Thank you. So this item tonight, as you know, that we've had several discussions about the old Plumtree Plaza and its location over on the University Parkway. You may remember, some time ago, we did start this process once before. There have been some changes, some of those have been within the development itself, they have made some significant changes, and so we thought it would be opportune for us to kind of step back and reinitialize the process. And so this item tonight is to create the survey area for what will eventually become the mixed redevelopment project area. The item covers about 34 acres, covers the entire Plumtree Plaza. And what we are proposing to do is, if we generate tax increment, and this again is for sewer improvements, so we have talked with the school district about this, and they know that it's moving forward, but it would generate tax increment for five years, or 1.5 million, whichever comes first. So we've significantly shortened the amount of time that would do, that it would be in place, as well as the amount. You may remember previously that when we first looked at this, it included 300,000 square feet of Class A office and two structured parking decks, and they have been subsequently removed. There's going to be some additional housing units placed on the east portion of the property here. And again, as a new redevelopment project area, this will generate housing set aside funds that we would have available in the future. Again, this is merely starting the process, we're kind of restarting the process based on some changes that were made in the plan for the development itself. In addition, we are also shrinking the ask and shrinking the time for the ask. And I think that Dixon had just a few moments that he wanted to take to kind of lay something out.
As you recall, last time, this was before you. The development agreement portion was fairly well figured out, and that was that they would either build 20 housing units that were lower moderate income, or they would make a payment in lieu of 18,500 per unit. That was part of the development agreement. The portion that was still being worked out was the sewer, offsite sewer improvements. In working with the developer, Public Works, Mr. Parker, myself, and with Brian Jones, have reached an agreement which we felt was consistent with what the council asked was to work that out with the developer. Essentially, they will be paying for some offsite improvements to the tune of about $1 million to enhance or upgrade a sewer line that is capped at $1 million. The city would take any portion above that, but pay ourselves back from the tax increment. They are also placing two bonds, cash bonds with the city, one to get another project. Again, there's three sewer line projects associated with this. The lining project has already started. Once the, once the developer pays or deposits the 350, there'll be another sewer line project that will get going, and then they'll also start bidding, the city will go out to bid on the other 680 West, is that correct, Dave? 680, 680 or 600 or 600 West improvements? They will receive a, a credit on the sewer impact fees for 250 of the 500 units due to their $1 million investment on the offsite improvements. But the developer is, has signed the agreement on that portion of it and ready to move forward. And again, we've reviewed this with the administration, with all you council members, and with the developer, and ready to move forward, so. Just wanted to give you that update of... So just wanted to give you that update on that portion of it. If there's any questions.
This goes back to the previous discussion, but where does the increment begin? I mean, we had, we had a project there, and it was producing sales tax. Now we have.
Well, it still has an assessed value. It's still on the tax rolls.
But there's no assessed value to any, to the buildings anymore. Do we start from where we were at the buildings or do we start?
Well, again, I, so typically what we would do is we would take the assessed value that's on the tax roll when we start it. But in this case, it would probably be the 2018, but I think that, you know.
So you're working that out?
Yes.
Okay.
And as we move forward with the plan, that will be kind of reflected within that is when the base year starts and what that base year value is. Yes, sir.
I'm just going to share my thinking on this one as well. I do have some concern that, I would hate a set of precedents where someone can come in to something that, you know, maybe run down or whatever, but still generating value and it being taxed at that higher level, demolish it, let it sit for a couple of years. So now that the tax rolls, you know, the assessed value has gone down, and then using that as a base point to move forward. Now, I don't think, that's probably not a strong business practice, and that probably was not their intent from the get-go, but it is a little bit worrisome that, you know, probably in 2000, whenever they started, 14, 15, that the assessed value was probably higher than what it will be in 2018.
Well, and, you know, they, in their defense, I mean, they spent a significant amount relocating the businesses, buying out leases. I mean, some of the, when they did buy the property, there were, some of the tenants did have the option to move, and so in order to make it, in order to make it work, they built a new facility for Cafe Rio. They bought out some of the leases and worked with some of the property owners and picked up additional, I mean, I don't think at the time, the social hall wasn't initially, the one that was right immediately adjacent to the old ShopCo. Initially, they weren't part of the project, but now that is, and so I think we're going to get a more cohesive development out of it. And it certainly wasn't, you know, their plan to sit as long as it was because it's, I mean, it's costing them quite a bit of money to carry the property for as long as they have.
So when I look at this, I'm asking, you know, what are we getting? What are we giving? And does it make sense for us? Again, this is something where we expect developments to kind of pay for their own infrastructure impact, whether that's generally through an impact fee or specifically on an individual project. And now we're being asked to create a reinvestment area so that we can take future property taxes and put it back in. And again, to me, that only makes sense if it is enabling a project that wouldn't otherwise be happening. Otherwise, you know, we're taking general fund money and putting it in something that we generally expect them to pay for, this infrastructure. So that's, so, you know, I understand, I appreciate the explanation of, you know, here's our other projects, here are the bonds they're putting up, this is how we're going to pay them back. But, you know, I have to look at this as, you know, what is the public value that we're getting out of this? And I do think there's a, you know, there is public value in getting this project going because it, I'm sure it's been painful for the developer, but it's also been painful for the community for it to be in the state that it has been.
So it's probably, I think Dixon alluded to it once, it's probably in the worst possible state, being kind of partially demolished. It's kind of, it's not built, but vacant, and it's not completely scraped off. It's kind of, kind of in the undesirable netherland, right? The in-between state. And so I think, you know, it's going to increase our efforts. So when the project's finished, we'll have 85,000 square feet of retail, 520 additional new housing units, and then 124, a new 124-room hotel. So the component that was removed from the original plan was the 300,000 square feet of office space, as well as the structure parking.
Aren't we getting more retail than we originally?
It's about 100,000. No, the retail is actually reducing.
Oh, it is reducing.
Absolutely. Yeah, and you will see that at University Place, you'll likely see it at Town Center some point. We're all overbuilt on retail right now. Not in just Provo, but countywide, nationwide.
Yes.
Yeah. And they would call it rightsizing.
Okay. Any other comments on this project?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is an ordinance demanding Public City Code direct an update Title 18, its Core Matter and the Associated Design and Management Manual. It's budgeted five minutes, and presented by Mr. Ryan Torgerson, Public Services Vision Director.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. We'll make it even quicker than five if there aren't too many questions. So we brought this item a couple of weeks ago. There was an issue that came up that we, we've talked a little bit more about as staff and with Development Services related to the setback from the river. Development Services and zoning, they're working on a Provo River master plan right now. We didn't feel it was prudent to move forward with any sort of setback information until that study has been completely vetted. So we've taken that part out of what you've seen. That's the only change from what was presented last time. So again, this is just revisions to our Stormwater Code to be consistent with our MS4 permit that the state issues for us. Also to align with our master plan that was adopted about a year ago. And then just some cleanup, our design manual, again, kind of following both of those items as well, our master plan and the estate regulations in our MS4 permit. So are there any questions? If not, like I say, not a whole lot different than what you saw a couple of weeks ago.
I appreciate that. As I was going through the material, I'm looking at this and trying to figure out what is different than when we were looking at before, and I spent probably too long trying to tease that out, and I never came across that. So it's just a section removed that was talking about setback from the river?
Yeah, so in the floodplain areas, we have proposed a 200-foot setback wherein all finished floors elevations would need to be above the flood stage of the river. We're still looking at that sort of setback. It's just with the master plan study of the river, we wanted to make sure we weren't being a little bit too ambitious there, so, or too restrictive. So we have put out an RFP to study our levees. With that, we've asked for a potential scope to look at some river cross-sections and maybe some, how we make the river an amenity. So that RFP will go out on the street here in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll use that information to pair with the Provo River master corridor master plan that Community or Development Services is working on. And then at that point, we'll determine what the appropriate setback is.
And what is that timeline? How long do we think it'll be before? Because to me, it seems like maybe those setbacks are fairly important if we're going to be getting development along here. And so if we're looking at three years out, you know, it doesn't make sense to put something in now, you know, even the changes in three years, or what kind of timeframe are we looking at?
So I'm not 100% sure on the timeframe. We feel like the levy study and the river cross-section, it's probably going to take six to eight months. We do have ordinance in place that requires a 100-foot setback period, so nothing can be constructed within 100 feet of the river. We were just proposing a limitation on elevation for, you know, between that 100 and 200-foot setback from the river. We, in practice, we do look at those and require some engineering. We require groundwater analysis and all that sort of thing. So really, in practice, we're already doing it on a case-by-case basis, so we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
I'm sure this is coming up, but I think we have had a little bit of a mind shift in using that as an asset rather than a liability. And I hope that we're still continuing to look forward to that rather than just hiding the river because it's an awesome thing.
Agreed. And that's exactly what the river master plan is intended to be, is, and you've all seen the beginnings of that, started by Jamin and his class at BYU. So agreed, Gary, it's, it should be an asset rather than just our thorn in our side every spring when a runoff comes, so. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll see you tonight.
Good. Thank you very much. Item five is an ordinance named between settlement authority schedule in Public City Code and providing for automatic inflation adjustments, presented by Mr. Gary Millard, Assistant District Attorney.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It's relatively straightforward. It's not as beautiful as the Provo River, but I think it's something that has needed to be addressed for quite some time. The figures that are currently in this ordinance were put in place in 1981, and things have changed just a touch in that span. We've talked for some time about adjusting these and have finally gotten around to doing it. So essentially, this proposed ordinance does two things. The first is to adjust the figures to match on an inflation basis what they were put in place in 1981, and then anticipating that this problem will arise in the near future unless inflation stalls somehow. We don't anticipate that. It adds in a five-year inflation calculation to change these levels. So in effect, the ordinance gives levels for decision-making settlement authority between the departments individually, the legal department, the chief administrative officer, and the mayor. And essentially, what we found in practice is that with things becoming more and more expensive, we're having to have a ton of meetings to decide relatively routine claims. It's not unusual for a run-of-the-mill car accident these days to exceed $4,000, which pushes it out of my department and requires a meeting with Wayne and John Borget. And in effect, we are spending an awful lot of manpower, time in the city to decide relatively small claims on a dollar-figure basis. Furthermore, all of these, all the information from these claims is communicated both to the mayor and to the city council through our quarterly report. If anybody has any questions or concerns about what we're doing or how we're handling these, I think it's done there. I did, I revised this from some work Lockberg did a few years ago, and I did notice a couple of things that I would like to see adjusted because I'm, you know. This should have a .00 along with the others, or not. It's internally inconsistent, and that drove me nuts when I pulled it up before I came up here. And then I think it would be wise to put in 2025, 2026, just so it's clear which fiscal year that we're referring to. I intended it to mean 2025, 2026. In any event, just ran a couple of numbers before I came up. In 2018, 2019, we had 31 such meetings, either with the CAO or the mayor or both. If this system were in place, it would cut that number just a little bit more than in half, down to 14. So going forward, we're just trying to save the administration, CAO some time. We think, you know, our department is certainly capable of handling those claims, and it also gives the department directors a little bit more leeway to settle claims. Currently, their authority is $250. This would push it up to 700 for things that they don't want to trouble claimants to go through the claims process. Obviously, if they have to do that and fill out a document, they have to bring it to us, they have to wait for us to do an investigation. It's a lot more involved. This way, if a department director has an employee caused some damage and they just want to take care of it, they can pay it out of their department budget and be done. So in effect, it simplifies that process and normalizes the numbers to current figures. So with that background, any questions for me?
So how did we come up with this 11-2, 27-9?
Kind of goofy numbers, right? It's the same process described here. We took as a baseline those 1981 numbers, used that inflation index from that date to 2018, which is the most recent available numbers, and then rounded it up to the nearest 100. And, you know, if the council wants to make them a little less, you know, kind of goofy, I don't think, you know, at least from my part, as the person who deals with this most directly in the city, that's fine. If you want to round them to rounder numbers that are better, just keep in mind, that'll be a little bit different than what it was in 1981, but that certainly, I think, is well within the council's prerogative to make it that way. The way I've written it in is to normalize it to whatever's done today, it would be adjusted every five years to match.
I love that you've got a logic behind those numbers because often it's, I see a thing, oh, that's a good number, and throw it out, but there is logic to 1981 because boy, that is a lot of inflation. And I hope everyone realizes that inflation to cities as well as their own.
Certainly. I mean, it makes a, it makes a huge difference because currently, my authority, my department's authority, rather, ends at 4,000, and that's, like I mentioned, is very low for current claims figures. I think it would be significant improvement for everybody. And we wanted to keep it the same as the council set this forth in the first instance.
So it looks like the multiplier is like 2.79. So if you just multiplied it by three, you'd have 12,000, 30,000.
I could definitely milk that. I, you know, I think any increase on the top end is certainly not going to bother me because that translates to more efficient processing of claims and less waste in staff time in the executive branch, so I certainly would not agree.
I was looking at that factor as well, and it actually surprised me that it wasn't a larger factor. Where, what, 37 years or so in rough rule, because usually with our general inflation, usually prices double every 20 years, and so.
27.
Excuse me. Okay. So my rule of thumb is a little out of calibration by that.
No, no, no. 30. No. 40, what is it? Almost 40.
This would have been 37. 37 years since.
81?
81.
19, 19, 38.
Yeah, but the base I used was 81. Numbers aren't in for 19.
But, sorry, so rule of thumb is generally 20. So this is actually less than I expected, and I don't mind those non-round numbers. I mean, we roll around and it's at 100. I think now would be a good time to start that process of just following whatever the inflation is. It's very logical, and I think it keeps us from getting so far out of whack because a lot of that can happen.
Certainly. So, yeah, I think if you wanted to keep them where they're at with the hundreds, if you wanted to do 750, 12, and 30, that's fine. I do think, I will say, I guess to your last point, I think the rounding to 100 is a good, keeping it at the same spot without getting, you know, really odd dollar figures in there. But, you know, whatever will of the council is, that's what we do. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I have a family obligation tonight, so Brian will be doing it at your evening meeting, but thank you very much.
Does the council make these changes adding the .00? 0.6?
You make this one just with this one.
Yeah, I just, and I guess while Gary's still here, I'll say, in consultation with Cliff, you know, I asked Cliff a question about the fiscal year thing. I'd actually propose that we say on July 1st, 2025, and on the 1st of July, every five years thereafter, rather than even referencing the fiscal years. So I've got that draft along with the .00 in here that I can just upload to on-base, but if you'd like to make a motion to have that be the motion, the version that's subject to the implied motion tonight, then we could go ahead and make those changes now, or it can be part of the discussion tonight.
So Dave, if we're going to make those minor changes, do we want to address the numbers too?
We could, yeah, if someone wants to propose.
I would propose 750, 12,000, and 30,000 using the multiplier of three.
Okay. So. So is that, was that a motion? Does we have a motion?
Just clarification, is that in addition to the...
In addition to those other...
What were the others? 750, 12,000?
And 30,000 down the next.
And it's what, there's 750 or one?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, it's value between 7...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you got that right. That one's 12,000. 3 and 12.
Yeah, so to go from the...
That one would be 12,000.
The 1981 numbers.
Yes, yes.
Not continued yet.
Well, it says, it says over, so... Yeah.
Okay.
But you didn't correct.
12,000.
Do we have a second for, is that a second? Second by Mr. Small? Discussion on the motion? I'm not particularly opposed to it. I just think that in five years, based on how this is designed, it'll be out of, round in five years. So I probably don't want to support the, the motion. But again, I like the amount that I, I don't care that much.
Are you saying, are you saying do the rounding to the nearest thousand? Is that what you're...
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, I would rather just the initial numbers that were proposed. But I've spent too many words talking about it for how little I care about. Just if I vote against it, please know that I'm not like ceding underneath. I'm okay with the proposal. Any other, any other discussion on it? Yes, Mr. Small.
I agree with your logic. My thinking was just that the slight increase that would represent would just make the process that much more efficient. That's why I would like to consider it.
That's a big point. Any other, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I will call for a vote. All in favor of the motion? And those votes.
Okay.
That engineer is very persuasive. He's...
Okay, now we are on to the resolution adopting the 2020 council regular meeting schedule. This is budgeted five minutes. Our director, the director, will present.
This also might qualify for the, close number of words for how little I care. No, I'm just kidding. So we've discussed with leadership and reviewed the proposed calendar for next year.
Just leave one second on this.
All right. So generally, as we look through the, the calendar for next year, we tried to avoid school breaks, holidays, and various primaries and elections that you'll face next year. Generally, we've gone to a first and third week schedule, with the exception of April is the one that stands out. We've also are proposing to the, this is part of the resolution, but separate from the resolution, we'll be proposing to the RDA a meeting schedule that will be on the Tuesdays following the first council meeting, with the exception of April, which you see, which we would propose April 7. And then on May, we'll have to make some kind of adjustment for a budget retreat on the, on the Tuesday, the 12th. But other than that, this is what we've proposed for your meeting schedule next year, or at least for three of you. Any questions?
Let me scroll down just so we can see our course. We'll be voting on this tonight.
All right. Well, the municipal council will now consider a motion to close the meeting. A closed session has been requested. There have been, there are several appointments, divorces of missions, and one appointment of a staff member to be considered tonight. And Mr. Jones, are there any other...
Well, I just added, as noted in the chair notes, Utah Code allows for closed meetings specifically to discuss the character and confidence of an individual. So to the extent that the council wants to meet and discuss some of those appointments, that may be appropriate in the closed session.
So I am looking for a motion to enter into a closed session. Mr. Emily, seconded by Mr. Andrew, all in favor?